Right there, but now he's got all this dirt from mail. I don't, whatever.
Good luck.
Alright, thanks for coming tonight, everybody. We'll start the meeting with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal, just as for all.
Okay, we'll start with approval of the agenda. Anything Dan to add?
Nothing.
Dwayne?
Have nothing.
No? Okay, um, hearing that, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Ryan will not be here tonight. He had a conflict with some licensing for work, so. Consent agenda. Are there any questions for administration on the consent agenda? Move to approve. Thank you, Dwayne. I'll, um, I'll second.
I'll second it.
Thanks Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto, I don't have any cards, um. Public hearing for the alcohol ordinance 110 edition. E1.
Alright, eh, this has been discussed a few times, but, uh, we have that public hearing tonight, included in your package, you've got the information uh, that was requested by council at our last meeting. They went through with, uh, Jan and, um, looked at the cost and that sort of thing. They've got the proposed ordinance language change as well, so. If there's any questions, we'll take those as.
Public hearing is the only thing, yeah, just the language is the only thing now. We have the fee scheduled on later.
Right, yep, so this is just a public hearing for the language?
Yep.
Okay, alright, we'll open the public mea, um, hearing. Regarding the ordinance banning the casting code of ordinances, alcohol licensing, section 110. Anybody from the public have any comments or questions? Okay, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. Um, any questions or comments from council? We've been through this a couple of times, so. I will entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
You, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Okay, on to G1, set fee for taproom on sale. Pardon me, just. So we've got, this is what we had last time, to come back with some justification for what the fee would be. Thank you for doing that, um, time and what it's gonna cost us each year, so the fee is $275. Any questions on that, how that came to be? I appreciate Linda putting the, it just gives us more justification if we're gonna add a fee, here's what we're charging, 'cause it's just a pass-through to reimburse us for expense. Alright, hearing any questions?
Move to approve.
Thanks, Dwayne, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The final Excel agreement.
Uh, so this is, uh, just to bring this to your attention, let you know that, um, that should be moving forward. Thanks to our city engineer, we were able to see some reductions in costs there, mainly due to the easement change. So, we are gonna see a little bit less cost there. You can see the number there, the, uh, they reduced it from, uh, $655,300 down to, uh, it seems like a reduction, doesn't seem like that much fun, but now it's $524. Uh, and, uh, we already had paid $186,000, so the total that's gonna be remitted to them is $338, and then we should be all set for the movement of those poles. So, at least, wanted to let you, just let you know that that's moving forward, and, um, our city engineer may discuss in, just briefly, the status of that project up there, but, um, you'll note that the, um, the movement on the trail section off of the dump road has already started. So, they've started grubbing that out, and I, they may even be moving dirt today, I don't know, but, um, just wanted to let you know where we're at with that.
Okay, and this supposed to start this fall, November?
Yep, they're planning on moving the poles in November, so get it all prepared, and then we'll be ready to go with the roundabout, uh, right away in the spring. Bid that project out, and then have that roundabout completed July 1, the same time 57 will be back opened up. And the whole road will be done and opened back up, that's the goal here.
Perfect, thank you. And since it's less than what we had approved before, we don't need approval, correct?
No, it's already been approved. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that, is, hopefully, we're done with that now, and it's a big expense, but.
Okay. Thank you, thanks for the update. Tax sale worksheet for the DeGroot property, G3.
Earlier this fall, I had included, uh, some information on two properties that were going to tax forfeiture. Um, one of those properties is a house. After reviewing that, I chose not to bring that one back to council, the cost was very substantial, I didn't feel it was appropriate to, it's like, they're looking for like $115,000, the county is, so it didn't make any sense to look at it all. However, this one, I did think, uh, might be of some value. I have an overhead shot of that property, it's off of Veterans, uh, Parkway there, the, the highway there. You can see it, it is a potentially buildable lot. I know Linda has been through various iterations with different folks who have looked at purchasing it. You know, it, it's a matter of, do we wanna acquire this lot? I mean, a portion of this purchase price would actually come back to the city because it's in taxes there in arrears on the lot. So it actually wouldn't end up costing us that much, but, uh, up to council, wanted to bring it to you to see if there was any interest in acquiring that lot for potential housing rehabilitation or, um, you know, some kind of purpose.
Is it the vacant lot shown in the picture?
It is, the vacant lot right in the middle there. Sorry, I kinda tried to get a good scale picture, so it sure shows what's around there. It is actually a good size lot, it's a deep lot, and there are homes on, lots on both sides of there, so I, I do think, personally, if we have an active HRA, I think that'd be a really good spot for it. But, I know that in the past, we haven't necessarily wanted to acquire property either, so I wanted to just bring to you.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? I don't know, I don't know, I'm not, I've never been big one about the city acquiring land unless we had a plan for it, like the Vale property, we acquired because we had the developer looking, and that was a, kind of a special situation. So nobody else is buying it, though?
Yeah, I mean, I guess part, that's part of the reason I bring it to you is that, yeah, I mean, what I foresee happening is, you know, realistically, either we would do some, something with it, or we're just gonna end up cleaning the, I mean, we'll be mowing the lot every month of summer, so.
Would that be something that Habitat for Humanity would be interested in?
That would definitely be an option, um, SEM, SEMCRA, or one of these other housing agencies would be another option too. I mean, I guess that's, as I said, if we had our own HRA, I think that's where we would look at it, because I think you would, you would say, okay, we can fit a, uh, some sort of residence structure on there. You know, we have some remnant parcels in town the city owns. There's one over by Lyons Park, actually, off of, off the end of a street that would fit another duplex. I'm, occasionally, I try to find, okay, where could we see where we could increase kind of that, that housing stock, where we have property that's not being utilized, it's just being mowed. And this would be one where, you know, there is some potential, I, like I said, I know Linda has looked at, with various people have called about in the past. So they were actively trying to market earlier. It went into foreclosure now, and some other counties offering it out.
I know, I know they're constantly looking for a land that might be one more house in town if we didn't.
Right.
Is this one wide enough that if they were looking, you could potentially house a duplex, or would that be a zoning issue?
Actually, I think when we looked at a duplex, would be the ideal situation, because what you could do is you could bring the road in, and then have the duplex turn to face to the west.
Right.
Or to the east, depending on where you want the drive to come in. And then, it would be a slab on grade, kind of a design. And that way, you know, you wouldn't have to worry about the width of the lot, really, 'cause it's plenty deep to put into the property. You know, and, and there are homes that do face the, face veterans as well, so it is feasible, it's just, that would be exactly what you'd wanna do, though I think a duplex right there would be about what could fit.
I mean, there's a, a difference between the city buying a property that's got a structure on it, and we have no plans for the property or the structure, but when it's a vacant lot, in, in the alternative, it's just gonna go to the county?
It is right at the county right now.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're offering it to us first, before they, they do anything else with it. And we could defer. You know, if the council doesn't wanna take it up at this time, that's your prerogative, of course. It may, it may sell, it may not sell, I don't, I don't know, but, I just, you know, plus it's that, trying to look at different things that we could do, possibly, so.
Yeah, I have no problem with it if we have a plan of what we're gonna do, I just don't wanna buy a lot and then sit on it for two, three, four years. We should be incentivizing someone to build, or something, but.
Sure.
We could buy it for the 11.5 and sell it to the school for 15. They could build a schoolhouse on there.
Tennis court?
Ball field, maybe?
Yeah, I don't think that's parkland there, I don't, I don't know, that'd be a pretty tight tennis court complex.
Yeah, you're right about that.
I don't know.
When does, when does the county?
Well, I mean, I think they do wanna know this month. You know, 'cause they'll, they'll start, what they'll do is a sheriff's auction or something like that, at some point in time. You know, like I said, you know, worst-case scenario, we could, we could pass on it and see if it sells, and then come back to it too, but, I'm, I mean, I'm just saying, if I had my own HRA and we were looking at that, where we were saying, okay, we're gonna incentivize someone to come in and build a duplex, create some affordable options or something like that, it'd be doable. It's gonna be a little different, because we'd have to work with an outside group to, to try and do it. I think it's feasible, but, um, it's an opportunity. We don't see a lot of, like, you know, Catherine's unique in a way that we don't see a lot of foreclosures. Most people are saying, hey, my house is worth X, I'm gonna keep it up, I'm gonna keep it nice. And, and that's why, like, you've got a house that, in some towns you might knock down, that they're saying is worth $115,000, you know, which, you know, I don't know about that, but, it's not what I'm looking at. Maybe the right person can get in there and fix it up. We have seen a couple of them in town that have gotten cleaned up and done very nicely with new siding and new, uh, roofs and stuff like that.
How's everybody feel about letting the county see if they can sell it to a private individual? If they can do that, great. If they can't, come back and say, hey, nobody's bidding on it, then we can look at it and.
Yeah, and then it gives us some time to look into Habitat and SEMCRA, just to, I'd reach out to them.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I'm for it, but I think if we move forward, I'd, I'd like to look at it, a bigger, bigger picture, maybe some neighborhood revitalization project or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, that's perfectly fine, if that's where the council's at, I don't have a problem with that. Thank you very much for the feedback.
Thanks, Tim. New business, billboard lease.
Uh, so this is the information, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. So we do have a property we acquired last year, of the Vale property, where there is a current billboard already situated on the south end of that property, kind of right off of Highway 14. The company that had been, uh, leasing it from the previous owner had contacted us, and they're continuing to interest in continuing, uh, to have that billboard there and leasing it. So this is not a, I'm not asking for any kind of approval or anything like that. Uh, but we, we just wanted to bring it to you to let you know that we are looking at that, make sure that you're comfortable with continuing to have a billboard on that property. Um, and I know the city attorney has had some feedback for me, that she would like to revisit this and take a look at it, and she's got some, a different language that she'd like to incorporate. Uh, this is a project Ian's been working on, I appreciate that. He's, uh, been doing the legwork to try and talk to the folks, very hard to get ahold of them. Right now, they're getting their billboard for free, um, because, you know, the lease isn't in effect. But, we do wanna get a new one signed, potentially, if that's where the council wants to go, so.
I'm all for it, if we can come up with a contract that's beneficial to both parties, so, my opinion, or recommendation would be to the council to have city attorney review it. It's rather one-sided right now, with no way out, so. And then let attorney left bring it back to us and see if it's something we wanna do.
Yeah.
Sound good?
Agreed.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Okay, administrators report.
Sure, we've got a number of items just to briefly discuss here. Um, we had a really good park and rec board meeting, a lot of information. We, uh, got to see some of the, the first look at the results from the Aquatics Center this year, and they, they weren't very good. Our expenses were up significantly, utilities were, uh, higher than last year. You know, it, uh, revenue was very good, revenue was in line with estimates, so that's good. It's, uh, it's always one of those things when we have equipment replaced, so there are gonna be a number of changes that coming for the, the park board, we'll be looking at it in October here, and if Ryan was here, I know he would talk about it too. Uh, we're looking at the hours, changing the hours up quite a bit, and our expectation is to get that information out to the public this fall still. Uh, we'll be putting it out on Facebook and trying to make sure that, um, this year we had some complaints that people weren't aware, they didn't, or they didn't feel like they were made aware of it. We did have the, the hours and the, and information out in March, before anyone started purchasing, you know, the, the, uh, the passes, but we, we always wanna do a better job of sharing if we can, so. We did also have a group from, uh, the Baseball Association came, they're certainly interested in more fields. We did talk a little bit about the, uh, the, the overall park plan for Lyons Park, and that's something that, in the future, we may be able to help them with some ballfields there, but that isn't a, a quick fix, so, what the park board had discussed was possible options for, um, practice field, either at the Northwest Park, the Northwest Greenway Park, or possibly in Northeast Park. Just because we do have some space there, I, we're not interested in having the city acquire any more, uh, you know, parkland for, for another ballfield without any use there. So, we've got that, let's see, tennis court replacement, I'm working on a project there. I have some information I shared with the mayor tonight, still gotta fine-tune a little bit, but, I think we are in the ballpark, depending on whether we install it ourselves or not. It would be a sport court, kind of a surface, which is a sort of a tile, that's placed over the top of the current structure. Uh, I think it's a, uh, it's a lot less expensive than a complete replacement would be, and I think it might be a good solution for us. Let's see here, Dodge County Ambulance Task Force, um, thanks to Nancy, she was able to attend for me. Uh, I wasn't, I was out of the office that day, had another meeting in the metro, and, uh, she, she had some very good information, she let me know that there's, so there's two options that we're looking at. A joint powers group, or possibly a special taxing district. So, this year, we're not expecting to see those, but Dodge County was there and let them know that they need to have some kind of structure if they'd like to get that going by, uh, June of next summer. So, um, we'll be interested to see, we're gonna meet again in, in October and continue to work on that. Nancy also let me know that now they've decided that Hayfield will not merge with Dodge Center Ambulance, so that was something they were, they were broaching, but now that isn't gonna happen, so. Don't know the backstory a lot on that, but, um, then we've got some aquatic center changes, as I mentioned. It's, it's one of those things where we have some, some significant costs, and it'll definitely impact our budget for next year. Last item there that, uh, we've got is the, uh, the Punch List Library, which is completed as of Friday last week. Uh, the parking lot's been paved out there, it needs to be striped still, but it's coming along. And then I'll let the, uh, the city engineer talk a little about those 2023 street projects, so. I think it's, it's kind of interesting, we, uh, we have all this buildup into Highway 57, and now it's grinding forward, and I wish I could say that we don't have to keep doing projects, but, there will be more projects, you know, because the streets just, they, they don't, you know, it's winter time in Minnesota and they deteriorate, so. Uh, I did task the engineer and our, our public works director to take a look, and to start getting serious about what we'd be looking at for some, um, replacement, you know, either reclaim and pave or milling projects, so, I'll let him kinda discuss those a little bit. Uh, other than that, I've got a few items in my, my packet here, just to briefly highlight. Uh, there's a white paper here, which was released, which talks about the, uh, electric rates. What we're seeing, um, in the average in the industry is a 18% increase, um, which is very substantial. So, and that's in a two-year period. Now, we have not done that with our local customers, we have, we have, in fact, we didn't, uh, we didn't have really any increases with electric, we did a rate study last year, so we will see increases at the end of this year. I'll also be bringing some some capacity rider recapture language, that's, um, kind of the issue, as you'll recall, this year, is we had that capacity auction, which came in extremely high. So, we'll have some language for that too, but, just wanted to let you know that I think, you know, um, it's definitely something we're gonna have to see, because our costs are going up substantially. And a lot of that has to do with renewables, um, so, which is a trade-off, I mean, there are positives and negatives to that, but the base power is something that, as more renewables come online, it means that the base power becomes less, um, financially viable. So these coal plants especially are being retired at a very rapid pace, because Excel, or whoever's generating the power, depending what part of the country you're in, is just not finding it to be feasible to maintain that plant. It's gonna, 'cause it has to be running constantly. And if they're not supplying enough power during the day, for example, when the renewables really work well, solar especially works well during the day, that coal plant, it's hard to idle it and then bring it back up again. And you can see, it's a little bit better with natural gas, 'cause those can be kind of wound down a little bit, but, so we're just seeing our costs continue to grow there, so fortunately, we're, we're locked into some long-term contracts, but, I wanna share that with you, and then there was one other item, uh, we did have a resident who, uh, was here at our last meeting, who, uh, worked through some of those issues with his bill, and we're glad to have done that. He had brought some other questions to us, so, I actually asked the, uh, the utility billings department to, uh, write up a memo related to how we do our billing, and currently, we bill in thousands of gallons, that's a, kind of the industry standard. And so the way that works is that, we, we round down with all of our billings for, for water, for example, the, uh, if you have 1,500 gallons of usage, you're billed for 1,000 gallons in that month, and the next month, you would start 500. So, he questioned that and, and wondered why that was, uh, the way it was done. So we shared this memo with him, and I, I let him know that we'd bring it to the council, and, um, in the, in the memo, it does talk about if the council would choose to go in a different way, it's, it's a possibility. It would require some software changes that may take some time and some cost. My recommendation is to wait until we, we change over. We are looking at a, a software change over probably in the next year. I think, Nancy, we're on track for that, right, next fall?
About that, yeah, and maybe to have implemented for sure by 2024.
And we do think with the talent system and whatever our new software is, it probably will be more user-friendly. It is feasible to, to go with a gallons measurement, if that's what the council wants to go with. It just requires some, some changes, but, uh, it's up to you, um, you know, please consider it, and, and if you'd like to move in that direction, you know, as a council, you can certainly let me know. Thank you.
And just, and just my opinion on that, but, I don't think we need to look at changing that right away. We're changing software, we're changing meters, we're changing the whole thing. I think there was some confusion with, one of the messages that came back and forth that I saw was, there was assumption that it's rounded up or down. It's always rounded down, so you're only paying for what you've actually used, you're never being charged for something you haven't used yet, so I think, if it's not broke, don't fix it right now, and as we get this new technology, it's something we can look, look at, so, that's just my opinion.
Okay, that's all I got, if there's any questions.
Okay, thanks. Uh, engineers report, update on a couple things, street projects, and then.
Quick update on the street project we talked about, uh, city administrator, myself, and public works manager over there. Um, they kinda talked about the next street project, so what we kinda formulated and what we're discussing tonight was about a million-dollar project in street work, uh, it'd mainly be, um, pavement, would not be utilities, what we're looking at. We've done a fair amount of maintaining the chip ceiling, crack ceiling, uh, so we had some roads that we weren't really on a chip seal, crack seal maintenance, more of the, uh, we're gonna have to come in here and do a mill and overlay, reclaim and pave, so. Some of the streets we're looking at was Fourth Avenue Northeast, uh, south of the fairgrounds from Seventh down to First. Sixth Avenue from Third Street up to Seventh, we've already done some previous projects up in the northeast area. And then behind kind of Plaza 57th with Fourth Street and Second Ave, that roadway now is in pretty tough shape, and then we're gonna be detouring the highway, um, early this spring, um, as we wrap up the 57 project. And then the last area would be Second Street Southwest, that's along where those townhouses are in the southwest part of town, between Veteran World Parkway and the railroad, so. Those are just, we just, at a very high level, just kinda looked at those areas, between Public Works and the admin, kinda, what sort of budget we'd be looking at if we're gonna, um, move forward the project, and then start, uh, potentially the special assessment process and do a report, and start looking at, uh, if we assess a reclaim and pave and mill and overlay project, 'cause it is in the, the city's, um, special assessment policy to assess those, so. If we do that, as we know, it takes a while to get those processes going, so. You know, pause there and ask if there's any questions or comments on that.
The stuff behind Plaza 57, is that kind of one of the phases of our utility replacements at some point?
It potentially is, um, and then we have a spot of sewer that we're probably gonna have to replace before there's a new road on there, so. That's one of the things I kinda wanna think through a little bit.
Okay.
Because that, that would kinda touch that area that we were looking at.
So that was one of our hot, hot spots with the flooding, was the backups and, you know.
Absolutely, so there is a sewer that we'd probably replace regardless if we went ahead with this project. Knowing that that bonding bill project's in kinda limbo, and that'll come through. So it's something I gotta work through a little more with Public Works, just wanted to have a high-level conversation if that was, um, unless you guys had other projects, other areas you were interested in, um, I'm all ears, I don't wanna get too far down the road and then have to back the ship up, or ask the question of why we're working behind Plaza 57. That's a good question, so that's one of the things we'll work out as we move forward.
Okay, that's all we had. Anybody else got questions on those? There are areas that need to be addressed, so.
Yeah, they're not gonna get any better, so, we're gonna maintain what we have and keep maintaining it, and replace what we gotta replace, and go from there.
Perfect, thank you.
That's about it, we're busy with construction, obviously, and I think we updated last month, and keep on moving on, we'll see, hopefully winter holds off, we get some things done around here, so.
Looks like they're getting ready to pave the first section of.
They're gonna pave tomorrow, they talk about tomorrow, or even Friday, Saturday, to pave the first section of Main Avenue 57, so.
Let's see, they're getting trails in through the fairgrounds.
Yep, fairgrounds, they're getting a trail in there, uh, south side of the transfer station doing that trail section, so.
Water tower keeps going up a little bit every three days when I go by, so, it's a little more visible.
Yep, so we're busy.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, personnel, um, couple things, uh, retirement of Patricia Schaefer Gottschalk, the library director, effective 12/31/22. Do we need to approve those right now?
Yeah, we would accept those retirements, yep.
So, like to thank Pat for her dedication to the library and her service to the city. She's been a, a, a great director at the library, so. With that, I'll make the motion to approve her retirement.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one, we're just gonna table. 12/24.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, it's worth a try.
No, I'm, I can't, I, I won't do that. Um, the retirement of Nancy Zoroski as the finance director, effective 12/15/22. Thank you, Nancy, for your service, what you do for the city, so.
I'll make the motion to accept her resignation.
I'll second.
I'll reluctantly second it.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so, thanks again for what you do. Uh, appreciate, I talked to you a bit before too, about getting stuff together for the next person coming in, and uh, we met yesterday, Dwayne and I did with Tim, for personnel, different, basically the five people that we're gonna be replacing here the next, next three months, so, um, going through that, so I appreciate your help in the pro, that process as well, so. Thank you.
We'll try and make it really smooth.
Perfect, appreciate that. And then, um, administrative, administrative assistant hiring recommendation, um, Jessica Gunderson, uh, has been interviewed, and the recommendation is that Jessica is hired for that position. Anything, Linda, do you wanna add to that, with that, or Tim?
Uh, well, we had a good application pool, we had 13 applicants for, uh, for the position, we, uh, and we actually had five that we had scheduled for interviews. We ended up interviewing four out of five, one of them was not able to make it to her, um, appointment, so, uh, we had two really good finalists that we thought were good, um, but when we looked at the scoring, um, Jessica ended up being the, the top scorer, and she does, as you can see in her, her application here, she has some experience with utility billing, which is an area that we really wanna strengthen. This position, we, we look at it as it's gonna be about 50% utility billing going forward, and 25%, you know, administrative assistant, and about 25%, you know, permits. So, um, I know that's an area that some of the members of the council have said we wanna strengthen that area, and talking internally to, obviously, we need to have some more of that cross-training, where if something happens to someone, we need to be able to have somebody else who can step up and do that. So that's definitely gonna be a bigger focus on this position this time around than, and, and maybe than it turning out in the last way, so. Just wanted to highlight that, um, she is scheduled to start on October 10th, and Amy will be here to do some training with her on the 11th, so we're able to do a little bit of a crossover. Amy's still gonna be in the area, and she's been willing to, to come in, into City Hall and to do some training, so. We're, we're excited about that.
Thank you.
Oh, I was just gonna ask what the pay scale and price was.
Looking up here, just a second.
I always ask.
No, no problem. She's had that ready for you.
You have this application, we should get that back to.
Yes.
Admin. Yeah, if you can handle those.
I was just reading through it.
Personal information on there, we should get back to you.
We didn't get one?
No.
Yeah, I never want any of that stuff.
She will start. She will start on, uh, grade six, and she'll be on step one, which for 2022 is 2179.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And just one more note on personnel, Tim touched on it, with all of these positions, we met yesterday for over an hour, kind of going through stuff, we're, we're kind of making some changes as far as the positions and the descriptions, to where they are gonna be more cross-trained, so we have better succession planning, so to speak, or contingency plans if somebody were to get ill, or move, or whatever it be, and then, so we don't have a spot in City Hall where all of a sudden somebody leaves 'cause of some, you know, circumstances, and we have, nobody can do the utility billing, or nobody can do accounts payable, or nobody can do the permit, so. Having more than one person, and basically laying that out in the, the position. So, same thing with Public Works, a couple of positions that are replaced, the same thing's gonna happen there, so, we'll be coming back to you with that as those things progress, so. With that, any questions on correspondence?
On, uh, the write-ups, is that something we'll see, just to, to look at it, to see what the cross-reference is, or?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think at our next council, I mean, I expect to have those in your packet, so we, we'll have a, um, Nancy's position, we'll have some, a little bit change in language and some different things, and then, that's a good question, so, at the Personnel Committee meeting yesterday, the, the Personnel Committee, uh, recommended taking the park and rec supervisor position and making that a public works supervisor position. So it'll incorporate a lot of what Ron's already doing, you know, he'll have some of the same responsibilities, and a few things will change a little bit for him. But they felt that that was the right way to go, so that's a new position description, so. Actually worked on that most of today, and, um, we'll have that in the packet for the next council meeting, for sure. I think, are there any other ones that you wanna see?
I will bring all of them back.
I think all of them, yeah.
Yep.
And then, is there gonna be any, with the changes, is there anything far as union that's gonna affect it, or is that no problem, or?
Not that we anticipate.
Okay.
But, the union may disagree with us, that has happened before, once or twice.
Sure, I was just curious, I mean, anytime we do a change, you know, there's.
They're gonna balk, no matter what.
Right, I was just curious if.
Well, I mean, I, there really isn't, there shouldn't be any effect to them in any way, because we're, we're not, we're not.
Should be beneficial, if anything.
So, um, yeah.
Right, yeah, we're not eliminating any positions that we currently have, so we're just changing some of the duties, but it's not gonna change the score of where they're at, and if it does, we're adjusting, we're recommending to adjust the grade that it starts at accordingly, where it fits with everything else, so, yeah, I mean, we're gonna be careful not